Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. O'Neal, the roll please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward one.
Here.
Jay Stemp, Ward two. Carrie Roth, Ward three.
Here.
Todd Cooley, Ward four.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward five.
Here.
Catherine, Ward six.
Thank you, Meredith. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from July 18. The council, you've had an opportunity to look these over to make any edits if there are any to be had. Now would be a time to make those, and if they're not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Menino, if you will get us started off with T-19-02, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Currently homeless shelters are allowed with a special use permit in our zoning ordinance or the general commercial and office commercial zoning categories. This text amendment would also add MU, multiple use, into that list of zoning categories where it is allowed. With that, Planning Commission did recommend unanimous approval for zero, and there have been no additions or changes to the proposed text amendment since the first reading.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this text amendment? If there's no discussion on the text amendment, Chair will entertain a motion. Sanders.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Randy, if you'll move us on to S-19-05, please, sir.
Yes, again, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the actual special use permit to allow a homeless shelter at Three Townsley Drive in the MU zoning district. This relates directly to the previous text amendment we've just done. Like the other request, this was recommended unanimously for O by the Planning Commission. At the first reading, I did provide you some handouts and some additional information that y'all had requested, and again, this was recommended for approval for O.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Menino at this time? Thank you. Alright, I'll open up a public hearing relative to case SU-19-05, and anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. Thank you. And when you do, if you would please, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Okay, my name is Donna Willis. I live at Thirteen Townsley Drive. I've owned that home since 1982, and I'm here to object.
And I know that we spoke a moment ago, and you have some materials. If you will start off and hand those to our clerk, please.
Okay, thank you.
And she can pass those down and distribute them to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, are there any comments you'd like to make? Roll up to that.
There's fifty-two more pages that go with that, however, it's all nine-one-one.
Need you to have you up here to the podium. That's okay.
I love to talk, but I see.
Anybody knows me knows I love to talk.
I wanted to address the question about the nine-one-one calls or police calls to the homeless shelter. I requested a open record request of those calls for the past five years. Twenty-two months were missing during the time, I believe it was when the Johnson Cove subdivision was going up. Those calls, there's no record of those. There's approximately 150 pages of calls, and I was wondering why that was not addressed.
Okay. Addressed by?
The council. I mean, nothing's been said about that.
The public information request was put in to whom?
Well, Mr., I can't pronounce your last name.
Menino?
I provided you the last two years of calls with the police department with the previous information. And at the first hearing, there were questions asked to, I believe it's the pastor here, about they know what he need trouble that goes on over there, and there are calls ranging from attempted suicide, kidnapping, burglary, theft. So those are concerns of mine, and I think that needs to be addressed.
You're saying there was a nine-one-one call for murder at the homeless shelter? Is that what you're saying?
Murder?
Yes, I think that's what you just said.
I said those are concerns of mine. Kidnapping, theft, burglary.
Burglary, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Well, there's a long list of calls.
Okay.
And I would like you to take that into consideration.
Okay.
And also, we're on a dead end street, which is gonna, the traffic now is really bad there. If you'll just read my letter, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that information?
Ma'am, would you be neighboring? Is your property, is it neighboring property to this?
Oh, this is one copy?
Yes.
David's property, highlight of the map.
That's your property, ma'am?
That is my property, and in my letter, I listed the four houses on that street that most are likely for turnaround. We have a lot of people that realize it's a dead end street. The four houses, one included mine, have larger driveways that are easier to turn around, and there's no ditch there. So I get a lot of that already. And I've had damage to my garden, my retaining wall over the years. I know this is gonna increase all of that, even though the neighbors, the guests there will not have all the cars, but their visitors are today, but you ride by, you'll see that now on the street on their, one of the homepages that talks about the Good Neighbor Shelter. It shows a delivery truck there on the street unloading maybe pizzas or something, I'm not sure. But I hope you
Thank you.
Take that into consideration.
Thank you. Chief McCann, I don't like putting you on the spot, but I'm gonna put you on the spot this evening. I know you enjoy that, but I know you're also, you're capable of it. Being that you're the, obviously, the police chief, and I guess the simple question is, in your experience and estimation, has there been a, is there typically a higher volume of of calls that get sent to the homeless shelter than any other particular area? And I guess, is there a distinction between if somebody makes a phone call for for somebody needing help versus somebody doing something wrong?
No. Actually, the current shelter is very well-run and not many calls. We don't have to respond to many calls at their, you know, a lot of times, they may be victims of a crime, and will go and take a report. I mean, we have arrested people there, but we arrest people all over town here. But it's a well-run shelter, and they manage it very well.
Would you say that the area where they're doing transitional housing now, because this is kind of the same nature of the Johnson Cove area behind that, there any higher instance of calls or need in that area versus anywhere else?
No, sir.
Any other questions from council?
Just the Waterford. I'm just kidding. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I have one.
Oh, sorry, Chief?
No, that's Chief.
Okay, never mind.
Not Chief. But she mentioned a dead end street, and I was wondering if there's any marking on the street to identify that, that dead end street.
Like a, like a sign, pull into it, there's no exit?
Yeah.
It's there? And what about a cul-de-sac, at least?
Alright. I think according to...
Go ahead, Councilman.
Just that, the letter from Deputy Chief De Prima said that in 2018, they were called there three times. They responded to the shelter three times, and just went for assistance and lost and found property, which I don't... Assistance is, you know, there was no paperwork generated. And that's in 2018, yes?
Well, I understand that the nine-one-one call center's technically separate from our police department. That it's, I mean, if we're...
Yeah, but if they're getting called, I mean, if there's a call, it might be coming through the county, but they'd be dispatching to our police officers.
Correct, but unless, I mean, again, I don't know what the calls are for, if there are, that mean nine-one-one calls, but, you know, the only way the police department will be aware of any calls would be if they were actually necessary for them to be dispatched out there. So, yeah, I don't know the nature of these calls, but you gotta take into consideration that the only information our police department, which they do a great job, by the way, could provide would be the calls that they respond to, not all the calls to nine-one-one from that location. The only people who respond, that would be the nine-one-one call center.
We, we all operate on the same records management system, so all the data, we can get all the data from the nine-one-one.
So you could, you do know exactly how the calls come in?
In the last few years.
I stand corrected.
Mr. Menino, relative to possible fears of, or concerns about traffic congestion, as I'm kind of looking through Ms. Wells's letter.
It's a dead end sign, it's a dead end sign.
Yes, thank you. So that we know there is a dead end sign that the people will simply ignore. But the, I guess the question is that for the usage of this property, there's ample parking. Let's just say that every person that was gonna be served by this had a vehicle. There's ample parking there so that there would really be no reason for there to be any parking along that street. Is that a true statement?
It was designed as a course of parking lot.
So there is ample parking there for the use that's proposed for this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Again, this is a public hearing relative to SU-19-05, and anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. If you would, step forward. And your ultimate address.
Yes, my name is Jessica Mitchum. I'm the executive director at Good Neighbor. To address the concerns, I did see the report on all of the eighteen and nineteen police calls. I did want to, I know I spoke to at least one of you about, there's really only one troublesome call on there. There was the two or three calls in eighteen. There is a significantly higher number in nineteen. I think the total was nine. Most of those were really minimal calls. There is one serious call that I wanted all of you to hear the details about. It shows on the police records that a child abduction was reported at Good Neighbor Homeless Shelter. I wanted y'all to hear the circumstances of that case. A married couple with a one and four-year-old boy arrived at our shelter on a Wednesday. They were brought to the shelter by law enforcement who found them living in a van in Cartersville, brought them to Good Neighbor. They were there on a Wednesday night and on a Thursday night, and during Thursday evening, guests inside the shelter heard the man tell the woman that they had taken those children. And so the next morning, we started investigating that when I showed up. The guest had reported to a staff member that they had heard the adults exchanged something about having taken those children. And so when we started to investigate that, the two children had been taken in an unsupervised DFAX visit in Iowa and had been abducted from the state of Iowa out of foster care. So Good Neighbor Homeless Shelter is reasonably responsible for saving those children. So I just wanted to point out the circumstances that happened there. Those children are now safe and in DFAX custody because a guest overheard another adult say something that they did not feel like was appropriate, reported that to our staff. I think every law enforcement officer in the city was on our premises for at least a little bit on that day. But there is a one-year-old and a four-year-old boy in this community that are now safe that didn't belong where they were and are only safe because they ended up at Good Neighbor because law enforcement found them in Boston there.
And that's what that nine-one-one call was about?
That was what that nine-one-one call was about. So I wanted to clarify, because I know on y'all's report, it shows child abduction, but you don't see any of the details of why. And so that crime did not occur. It was just discovered on our premises, and those kids are safe just because of guests and staff doing what they are supposed to be doing.
So that's what nine-one-one call saved those children?
That's right. I would also like to argue that I wholeheartedly believe that Good Neighbor actually occupying Three Townsley Drive would push criminal activity further away from that location. If, and I, I've wholeheartedly believe that our organization would be just as invested, if not more so, than anybody on that street to push any of that activity further away, because we don't want any of that anywhere near our guests. So we are all the ti, I mean, our organization is committed to all of our guests being drug and alcohol free. So the last thing we want anywhere near our premises is anybody who has drugs on their person. That's the last thing any of our guests need to encounter. So I feel like rather than being a magnet for that, we are committed to being an organization that would drive that further away from where we're located, rather than attracting that to where we're located.
If you do, if there is a, let's just say, bad element that is discovered there, and, I mean, whether you call it home or not, do y'all take steps to try to prevent that individual or group of individuals from coming back and potentially being in the area ever again once it's discovered?
Absolutely, although we have very limited, but I've been with the organization eight and a half years. We, those kind of circumstances almost never, I'm trying to think of a situation where that's even arisen. Maybe, I could probably count on one hand in eight years, the number of times that we've had serious trouble with an individual on our premises at all. And generally, if they're asked to leave, and if it comes to them being forced to leave, which literally almost never happens, we don't have repeat incidents with that individual. I do recognize that the way TV, I've talked to several about this. Man, it hurts to operate Good Neighbor Homeless Shelter, because I recognize that the media only portrays homeless shelters in one way, and that is that they are all a magnet for all the things that none of us want around us. But there are other ways. I'm really thankful that some folks who have expressed concerns came out, actually visited our location and saw what we do. But they don't all look the way they look on TV and movie, where there's people wandering around who are high, and there's needles everywhere, and there's all kind of people floating around that, like, not all shelters have to look that way. I don't, I certainly don't feel like our organization looks that way.
While I have you, one of the things that came out through this process was the desire to have some conditions
Absolutely.
On that property, and there's nine of them, and I think we were gonna add a tenth one this evening.
That's right.
I just wanna, if you'll indulge me, to read through these to make sure that these, that way that anybody that's here can hear what these conditions are. The shelter will provide 24/7 onsite management. Guests to notify staff when entering and exiting the facility. The facility hours of operation are posted 6:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. till 11:00 on Fridays and Saturdays. Residents have a curfew of seven a, of 7:00 p.m. seven days a week unless it's job relation, job related, excuse me. No loitering in the parking lot. Smoking limited to designated areas only. Smoking area closes at 9:30. Guests' visitation only from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That's seven days a week. Possession or using or selling of drugs, alcohol, illegal drugs, alcohol or drug paraphernalia is prohibited and will result in immediate eviction. Possession of firearms or other weapons will result in immediate eviction. And then, I believe, you wanted to add, your program is a ten-week program?
It's a tw, we discussed twelve weeks, so we've gone, over the last eight years, we've fluctuated between eight, I mean, between 10 and 12, based on really closely observing how long it takes someone to save enough money to get an apartment, and that's our end goal. So I would like that to reflect twelve. It is currently 10. I can't tell you, that wouldn't change, because just the environment of helping people get jobs, save money, and move into housing is a little bit fluctuating.
So twelve weeks is fine with me. That's what we wanted, I just thought we were gonna give you a little leeway on that program.
Yes.
So all those conditions are ones that could be abided by and will be monitored by your organization.
Those are already all true of what, of our operation at 110 Porter Street, and would certainly be true of this new location.
So those are already in place?
Those are already in place at our existing shelter, and we intend to operate in the exact same way at Three Townsley. One other conversation that came up, I was speaking with Joelle Hathaway. She is the majority tenant at One Townsley Drive, and she and I were talking about problems she's had operating in that area. And one thing she did mention is that even without Good Neighbor Homeless Shelter there, she's already had a handful of people walk into her place of business who were disoriented or needed assistance of some kind. And so she and I had a great conversation about the fact that Good Neighbor Homeless Shelter, having staff there 24 hours a day, means that when that occurs now in that area, there's somebody there who actually knows what to do and how to help that person. I realized, because I've been at a homeless shelter for a long time, I know what to do in that situation, and most of you would not know what to do in that situation. And so there's already some problems of that nature in that neighborhood, and having somebody there all the time that anyone on that street could come, knock on the door, and say, hey, we have somebody who needs help. Our staff handles that all the time and would know how to quickly get the kind of help that person needed, which in many cases is more help than even we can offer. And so we would know what to do with that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes.
My knowledge of the homeless shelter is a few years old.
Yes.
I'm just curious, you have to pass a drug test to stay there?
Yes.
You have to pass a background test to stay there?
Correct.
So there's a lot of screening that goes on. You just don't take anybody?
That's correct.
They have to qualify for your program that takes them from their circumstances they are now to work and then on their own.
So we're not, we're not just talking about some transit shutout?
That's correct.
Where train is dropped in one night and leave the next.
That's correct. So drug alcohol testing happens for everyone when they arrive and can randomly occur for anybody at any time, and refusal to tolerate a drug alcohol test is immediate exit. So we can randomly test any of our folks, and I want to, I want y'all also to hear that we almost never have problems with that. There's another reality that TV and movie wants to lie to you about. Y'all probably all assume we deal with this daily, weekly, monthly. We might deal with it quarterly, that we even question anyone and think that we need to randomly drug test or alcohol. Like, it almost never comes up. It's so rare for anybody to fail once they're there. They know that our staff is watching them 24 hours a day. They know that we know what their behavior looks like and where they need to be, and so they know that they're not going to get away with it, so it almost never comes up. But yes, drug alcohol testing happens, background checking, and then everybody has to be looking for a job or working. I generally say those are kind of our three golden rules of what we do.
Any other questions for Ms. Mitchum at this point? Thank you for your comments.
Yes, sir.
We'll continue the public hearing for SU-19-05. Again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. Step on forward.
You got me started now, talking. I would like to ask Jessica about the seven o'clock curfew. If they're not in by seven, where do they go?
So they have to be home by seven unless they're at work, and we, they have to turn in a verification from their employer that they are off their schedule. So unless they're at work, they have to be home at seven, or that's cause for them having to leave the shelter.
So what happens if there's no second chance? You just have their stuff outside, or?
Generally, as long as they stay home, then we will let them spend the night. They come in super late. Again, we don't have any problems with it. Most of them that don't come back have pretty much provided their fun, and so maybe they shut the next day, collect their belongings. But we don't have many people, it is extremely rare if somebody walk in at 7:05 or 7:10 and just have this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, anybody else wishing to speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions listed here, 139, that you just previously read off, plus an additional condition, number 10, limiting the guest stay to 12 weeks.
Twelve weeks maximum?
Twelve weeks maximum.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, so I've got a motion to second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Menino, you have the next item. It's ordinance correcting some frontage requirements.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We have some overlap in our ordinance in this particular section in Chapter 23 references some frontage requirements that doesn't, which is not consistent with our zoning ordinance, and this corrects that. And your approval of this proposed ordinance amendment is requested.
Alright. Any questions or discussion on this item? This is a first reading. We'll take this up for final consideration. Our meeting on August 15th. And I'll wait for Randy to, oh, you're not doing the next one. That's right. I'll turn it over to Ms. Brock for the next one.
Okay. Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a code of ordinance change for the city to allow for Sunday sales of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on the premises. This authorizes a referendum in the general election and to provide for adoption and effective date and other lawful purposes. Alcohol Control Board did recommend your approval of this.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on that? This simply puts the brunch bill on the ballot this November during the city elections. And again, first reading, we'll take this up for consideration. Our meeting on August 15th. And we'll move on to the next item. Mr. Hampton, you've got the next two, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First item, the, this is a second reading, reading for the DGR rider revisions that we talked about at the first reading. Nothing has changed since the first reading. Again, this was a revision to remove some punitive capacity fees that were in our DGR one rider, which is the rider that applies to our customers that have distributed generations such as solar power. So what we did was, we did not like the fact that these were punitive. Working with one of our customers and ran some numbers, and the outcome, we did not like it. We didn't think we should do that with our customers, so we opted to remove them. So we recommend approval for that.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, and if not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one for you, please, Derek.
Yes, the next one was a purchase of a 150 KVA three-phase transformer. We did reach out to three vendors to get pricing. We had to use our last one for the new fire station project, so we currently do not have a spare. So we're kind of in a hurry to get one. The second lowest price of $7,865 was from Gresco. We recommend purchasing that one just because it is in stock and we can have it within a week. So if we lose one on our system, we won't be in a pinch.
Very good. Alright, so any questions for Derek on this item? And if not, a motion, please make sure you indicate that it is going to the right vendor.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a Gresco in-stock transformer.
Thank you. We'll have a second.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I've got a couple of walk-behind mowers I need to purchase, a 36 and a 48-inch floating deck mower. We took bids, and the low bidder was Taylor Farm Supply at $11,007.62, and this will be a GMA lease pool purchase, and it is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Sanders on this item? And if not, a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And, Mr. Archer, do we have to make note when we're making that motion that it's part of, that it's part of the lease pool?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Do I make the purchase, the GMA lease pool?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. While Mr. Jones is working his way up, council, we will have one item that he'll be adding to the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to add that item, please.
A motion. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
One item added. We'll take it, take that one last. So go ahead and work down the agenda, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. First up is another restock purchase. We do these, as you're well aware, from time to time. Tonight, we're purchasing three-quarter through two-inch ball valves. Obviously, those are used throughout the system. Bids were taken, and Hayes Pipe Supply was the low bidder at $5,702.26. That is a budgeted item and recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Yes, sir. Next up is our annual EPD water testing contract. EPD's been performing this service for us for a number of years. They ensure us a 100% method compliant testing, so that eliminates the possibility that we are out of compliance for a simple administrative, I guess, oversight on the part, either on our part or on a contracting lab. They schedule this so that we don't miss scheduled and routine, or scheduled and special sampling that's required throughout the year. They've been providing this service, as I said, for a number of years. In the last six years, the price has been fixed at the same amount we're discussing tonight, at $9,200, and that is a function of the service population. That's how their pricing works. So this has been a good program for us. So this has been a good program for us. I think the city has benefited from it. And I think one of the benefits too is there is, there's some impartiality here that, that people appreciate about, about municipal water. I mean, there's, we are all familiar with the flints and the stories like that about people complying through, I guess, less than honest means. And yeah, we pay the state of Georgia, but they're not going to give us a result we want because we're writing them this check. So I think that's worthwhile as well and certainly would recommend that for your approval.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The added, the added item, please, Bob.
Yes, sir. This is our Vaccon truck. This is a large truck. It's a combination vacuum and hydraulic jetting truck. We use it to clean pipes. What this truck does is not only will it clean the pipe, but it actually vacuums the material out of the sewer simultaneously. The truck was purchased in 2000. It has been a complete workhorse for us, but it has had only breakdown maintenance done on it since that time. So it's approaching 20 years old. It is full of switches, relays, hydraulics, seals, rubber parts. All of that stuff has dry rotted in 20 years and is causing numerous problems. We've had the truck break down and had to leave it where we were using it because it was immobile. We felt like it was time to start looking into its replacement and we're, we found out that a replacement, the same, same truck new, would be approximately $450,000. The company offers a refurbishment program. The program has multiple levels. As we stated earlier, we believe that we'll be able to get the truck back in service using their mid-level, which would be around $150,000. We budgeted $200,000 in this year's budget for this project and would like to ask for an authorization not to exceed 200 because we, as we all know, when you send something in like this, there's always going to be something that you can't see, you don't know about, and that would allow us to address that without having to come back for possibly multiple items.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve, but to not exceed $200,000. And if, once they, the diagnosis back and there's no need for us to get the more expensive package, that you automatically take the lower package or cheaper package.
Absolutely.
So a motion not, to not exceed $200,000. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Hill, you have the next two, please, sir.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. I have two easements. The first one, of course, is the one with Toyo. The easement, that was because of Toyo. We did work up there a year ago. We had to relocate a gas main for them. We had it on easement at that time where we relocated it so that they could do part of their expansion. They've given us a new easement. And since the state owns that property, the governor will have to sign off on this after, hopefully y'all approve it. And we're just asking you to approve it.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Really, it needs to be a two-part motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the quickly, the piece of- Yeah, it needs to be a motion to, to accept the deed of easement from the state and to approve the quitclaiming of the older easement back to the state. So we get something and we give nothing.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion with David just said? Or who made that original motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the easement and approve the quitclaim deed.
Second. The motion, including the language David just really ready to.
Thank you. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item for you, Michael.
Thank you, David. Sorry, council. The second one is an easement for a gas main and it's with, it's at the People's Valley and Gilreith Road subdivision, which is Four Seasons. It will give us a second feed in there. Y'all are having to approve this or hopefully, because we have special stipulations in this. This is where we're giving them four services, service taps. We're going to put the pipe 48 inches deep rather than the 36 to 40 inches deep. That's so that they could do some work over it if they needed to. Plus the fact that, and I did this earlier, didn't I?
Consistent.
(laugh) Sorry. Oh, and if we have to remove it, they, if they give us a, if they need it moved for any reason, they give us a replacement easement, we'll move it at no cost to them.
Very good.
Sorry.
Very good. Any questions? If not, a motion?
Make a motion to approve the easement with the stipulations.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brock, you have the next item, please.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is an agreement regarding the contiguous parcels owned by Village Hill X-Town LLC in the city of Cartersville and the drainage access easements, the retaining wall and the sidewalk on the city of Cartersville property. And your approval of the agreement is recommended.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Tim.
Thank you, yes. Dempsey Auction Company will be handling the auction of the Old Fire Station Number Three property as well as the adjoining Wolf's Crack property on West Avenue. This is a sales contract for them to do so. Keith has reviewed it as well as myself and your approval of the contract with Dempsey Auction Company is recommended.
Questions, comments or motions?
Did we decide when we're going to start this? It will-
Coming.
Coming, based on the appraisal and the signing of this contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Last one for you.
Yes, this is our annual dues request for membership and participation in the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission. The total amount is $21,141 for fiscal year 1920 and your approval is requested.
Okay. Questions, comments or motions?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, the floor is yours, sir.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the property taxes received from the city MNO maintenance and operation, property tax collections are used for general city government operations. They include police, fire, public works, recreation, et cetera. The proposed 2019 millage rate is 3.259 mils. It is considered to be above the 2019 rollback rate of 2.106 mils. As a result, the city is required to hold three public hearings for the public to voice their opinions about the proposed tax increase. This is the second of those three public hearings and I'll open it for whatever else will be done.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom at this point? Thank you. A public hearing relative to the MNO millage rate for the city of Cartersville. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against me, do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close this public hearing. We'll have our third and final public hearing during the city council meeting on August 15. So Mr. Reinhardt, if you'll continue on with the other items that you have before us tonight.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the Cartersville City School System has recommended to their, to their board to lower the city school system's 2019 millage rate to 14.576 mils. This is the rollback for 2019. The city school approves the school boards, I'm sorry, the city council approves the school board's recommended tax millage rate for the residents where all the property taxes collected are used for the city of Cartersville school system.
Thank you. Questions for Tom on this? And if not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
The third item I have, Honorable Mayor and Council, is the Cartersville Business Improvement District is made up of the downtown Cartersville Business District. These business owners have been assessing, self-assessing property taxes for many years to raise funds for the use of the downtown area. The Downtown Development Authority works with the local businesses to use the funds to improve the downtown area. The DDA board requested the city approve the recommended bids property tax millage rate of 1.789 mils. This is the rollback rate for 2019. Recommend approval of the Cartersville Business Improvement District property tax millage rate of 1.789 mils 2019.
Questions, comments or motions?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And finally, the last one I have is for the citizens of the Cartersville approved a referendum in November of 2014, authorizing the city to issue bonds to be used to pay for renovations and improvements for the Parks and Recreation Department. The bonds were issued with a 10-year payback period. In order to make scheduled payments, we, we, the city needs to, need to assess a property tax millage rate for the, for that bond payment. The proposed 2019 millage rate for this is 0.861 mils. The rollback rate was 0.903 mils. Millage rate for this were basically fluctuated over the 10 years depending on what the bond payments are, because the bond, the bond payments do fluctuate. And I recommend the approval of the Cartersville Geo Bond, Parks Recreation Bond Tax Millage Rate of 0.861 mils for 2019.
Thank you. Questions for Tom on this? And if they're none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom. Is there any other business that needs to come forward, council, this evening? If there is none, chair will entertain a motion.
Some moves.
To the what?
To the chair.